You allow me to come back up here and continue the conversation with you all as we've gotten into the search process a little bit. There's a reason I ask for us to meet in this room in this way. I'll talk about it maybe a little bit more later, but right away you should get the sense that this is different, right? It's a little bit of a different setting. And like I said, I'll touch on that a little bit later. The reason I wanted to come back up here and talk with you all and offer this and as we talked, this is, you're not getting charged extra for this. I wanted to come up here, continue the conversation because you've got a great community. As I'll talk about a little bit later, you have a very interesting, and I don't mean that in a bad way, candidate pool so far. I want to do whatever I can to set you all up for success. And sometimes that means having some conversations that we may not want to necessarily have so that we can raise awareness and have some time to reflect. So we'll talk about that a little bit more. So ultimately, my goals, and certainly there's opportunities for questions and discussion throughout, but my goals for today and why I came up here was, one, to raise some awareness. You probably already know what some of the topic and discussion is going to be about. To encourage your personal and team council reflection. To support your preparation for the search and the interview process and the onboarding process and help answer any other questions that may remain from the last time I was up here. And then ultimately promote a successful transition because that's ultimately what you brought us in to do. Scott's retiring, moving on, whatever you want to describe it. We need a new city manager. We want a city manager that's going to stick around for a while. At least that's what I've heard in the process so far. Agenda-wise, it's a little bit different, but all the topics are all in here. I just consolidated some of it. So we're going to, basically, I already walked through this, but search process, optics, vetting, interview day, the deliberations, selections, negotiations, and onboarding. We're all going to touch on all of that. Again, appreciate you being here. I know we've only got two hours. There's a lot to get through. Some of this stuff I'm going to breeze through and I will make sure Brenda gets a copy of the slides. So if you want to look back on it or need to refer to something, especially if it's a little fuzzy, Brenda will have that available for you all. So first and foremost, before I get into rolling, any questions so far? All right. So the search process itself. I'm not sure how hard I hit on this when I was up here the first time, but let's talk a little bit about hiring a city manager. So I don't know all of you on a personal or professional basis. I know of you based on the conversations we've had so far. I'm not sure how many of you have been through the hiring process. In particular, how many have been through the hiring process of an executive level position? This is not your standard everyday process. This is not hiring a clerical position. That's not to undermine, you know, what Brenda does, but this person, as we'll talk about a little bit later, is the most important decision an elected body makes. And this particular community has not had to make that decision or go through that process in a very long time. So remember, I can't remember how many meetings ago now, but we updated your job description. I know you can't see this, but think back. Remember all of the things that were part of that job description that this person is responsible for. As I said, of all the duties, this is going to be your most important decision that you will ever make as an elected individual on this board. And hopefully you only have to do it once. City managers like to stick around for a while too, especially when we get a good fit. So I want to read something from the charter because there's a couple of things in here that I think are really important reminders. And I look at charters all the time, and especially when I read this one, the word "shall" really jumps out to me. So the city manager shall be the chief administrative officer of the city government. As a whole, this person oversees everything your taxpayers pay for, all of your fees, all your fines, all the responsibility, which we'll get into in a little bit. This person is where the buck stops. They shall be selected by council based on the basis of training and ability. And even some charters, it doesn't look like yours does, but even some charters get even more specific than that. They'll get into years of experience. They'll get into the type of experience. So thankfully here you have a little bit of flexibility, which bodes well for some of the diversity in candidates that we're seeing so far. The most important piece of this whole section, I mean, it does go on, but I only stuck to the really important parts in my mind. They shall serve at the pleasure of and be subject to removal by the council. I want to hang on that last part, "the council." I've seen this almost every place that I've worked, and it's a tricky balance for a city manager to walk. But if I was your city manager, Debbie, I don't work for you. I don't work for the mayor. I don't work for Tanya. I don't work for Scott, Tom, Jeff. I don't work for you as individuals. I work for you as a body. Now, I'm responsible to you. I need to help make sure that you have all this, all the information to make the decisions that you need to make and all that stuff. But when it comes to the implementation of policy, that city manager needs to be, needs to ensure they're implementing the policy of the council, i.e. depending on the vote at least four. Now, yes, there are some that are going to require five votes or what have you, but that's right there in your chart. So why is this important? And why is this, again, I'm hitting on this a little bit more. You can't see this. You'll be able to see it later, but what I like about this particular graphic, ICMA, for those that don't know, is the International City County Managers Association. For those that are members, or even if they're a member of the Michigan Municipal Executives, our code of ethics is, comes from ICMA. But what this graphic does is it helps demonstrate all the different things that a city manager is responsible for, not just, you know, on the day-to-day operational basis, but from a leadership standpoint as well. Here are some other reminders, and hopefully I don't, didn't mess up these numbers because I was doing a little bit of it from memory, but 26 employees.
Sounds good.
Right? Okay, so they're overseeing 26 employees. They're responsible for all of your 3,000-plus residents. Beyond that, you have tens of thousands of employees, visitors, residents, all of your community, all through, across the day, across the year. They're, the city manager is ultimately the one responsible for their health, safety, and well-being. You have an over $10 million budget. I'm biased because I used to work in the profession and I still do. I find it very interesting when I hear criticisms of the role of a city manager, how much they might make or what have you, because ultimately the city manager is the chief executive officer. You know, yes, we'll hear people gripe about, you know, I'll pick on Chase, Jamie Dimon, right? He's making millions of dollars. He's that chief executive of Chase, right? Your city manager is your equivalent of Jamie Dimon scaled to the city of Whitehall. Now, that's not to say you're supposed to give out all kinds of, you know, bonuses and all kinds of stuff like that. It should be compensated fairly, but that is the equivalent in the private sector to the public sector. You have tens of millions, probably over 100 million, of infrastructure in the ground, above ground, throughout the community, properties that this manager is ultimately responsible for, keeping up, planning, prioritizing all that with the support of staff. And again, we talked about this, the buck stops with the city manager. Things go right, this is something I learned from my first real boss. Things go right, it was because of me, because I worked for him, remember? He was a city manager, but he would say in reverse, "It's council. Council did all the things right." When things go bad, he would take the pressure, or in reverse, it was always on the city manager. The city manager ultimately is responsible for the implementation of city council policy. It's a lot of pressure. And we're seeing that pressure play out in our peers, which is one of the things that our team is working on right now. So let's talk about your timeline, because we're going to talk a little bit tonight about the interview process. We don't have to hammer out dates tonight, but I at least want you to look at how I see things shaping up right now so that I can work with Brenda and we can start putting some holds on your calendars. I think I've given you some teasers, but it's starting to take a little more shape. So if you remember right, applications close May 30th. What you've hired us to do is we're reviewing those candidates, we're reviewing their application materials, we're giving them, we're pre-vetting them in multiple ways. If we think you meet minimum qualifications, based on everything we've discussed so far, based on the profile, they're going to get a questionnaire. You will see the responses to those questionnaires for those that we bring forward for narrowing. We're going to put them through a pre-vetting interview. There's reasons why we do both. I think I mentioned this at the first meeting. One, I want to know if you can write a sentence and you can communicate in writing. A lot of people, I overgeneralize, I apologize. A number of people have lost that art of writing, of written communication. I think we can blame it on a number of different things, and for me, it's spell check is my kryptonite. But then when I'm talking with them, I want to know how they interact on the fly. I want to know how they present themselves, how they carry themselves. Yes, I want it to be casual because I also want to get a sense of who they are as a human, but I also want to see how they respond to questions. And again, we'll do a preliminary background review. Essentially, I'm looking for red flags that jump right out. We'll do a full-on background when we ultimately decide either who's getting hired. The most I would ever recommend is to do backgrounds on all the ones you interview, but most of our clients only do that final choice. To date, and actually I just checked it again, I checked this at noon, you're at 20. I checked it right before this, you're at 22 applicants. I recognize some names. There's some names I don't recognize. What I love, what I'm seeing right now is I'm seeing a lot of diversity in candidates, and what I mean by that is experience. There is a lot of different types of leadership in here. Not all of them are in the municipal management world. Some communities are good with that, some aren't. We'll see how it all plays out. Sometimes it's easy to see how it's going to translate once we talk to them and we vet them, other times we don't. I was just telling your city attorney before we started, one of my colleagues is doing a search for another community, and she was absolutely blown away by some of the quality of non-traditional candidates that she's seen in her pool. I have not seen that too much up until she did that search recently, and then also my other colleagues doing the Ottawa County search, and we're seeing it there as well. That's a good sign for the profession, but we, it's going to continue to be a challenge because it's hard for councils. I mean, you are all elected. You're responsible for the fiduciary resource of the city and making the right hire. Sometimes it can be hard for a council to take a risk on somebody who hasn't worked directly with the municipal government. So next, again, we're going to have to play with this date a little bit. We'll see how many applicants we get. I like to give you at least five days with the closed session packet. Remember, per OMA, we narrow down our candidates in a closed session. You're allowed to review those candidates in that closed session. We will come out of that closed session. We will invite these candidates by number. So it's like, I think I already talked about this, 10, 15, 20, and 30. Again, because these candidates can request confidentiality, but I want to make sure you have at least five days with that information because you're going to get a lot. The last couple packets I've done have been anywhere from 10 to 15 candidates. Now, when you get that packet, you're going to have their cover letter, their resume, you're going to have their questionnaires, you're going to have my notes from the virtual interview. There's going to be a lot for you to review, and you're going to want to take your time with that so that we can have an efficient discussion when we go to narrow it down. So if all goes smoothly, we could potentially do it June 12th or 13th, which I think is the end of that week in June, or possibly even early the week of the 16th, which, if I remember the dates right, would be a special meeting for you, but both would be a special meeting for you guys. From there, and I believe this was in a prior email, we're looking at what I would call orientation in interviews over the course of June 26th and 27th. This is all depends on how we end up ultimately structuring the interview process. My colleague, April, the process she's doing is like a sunup to sundown. They're consolidating all of their, what I would call, internal engagement and review and council interviews all in the same day. The last couple I've done has been like an orientation on that Friday. That's where we're showing them around town. We're showing them facilities. They might be interacting with staff. There might be an open house if you all want to do one, stuff like that. Day two, which is usually a Friday or Saturday, those are interviews all day, depending on, again, how many candidates we ultimately have. And we'll talk about some of that more later. Did I hear a question? Yes.
How many interviews? You're not going to interview all?
Oh, gosh, no. No. What I, I've changed my opinion some since I've done these more. I'm probably going to recommend that we look at about five candidates to be invited for interview because typically, at least what I've seen in the last couple, you usually lose at least one between the time of being offered an interview to accepting an interview. And the reason for that is either, you know what, I've changed my mind, or you'll get, especially in communities where they really like their manager, word gets out, they're working furiously to try to maintain them. And then we'll talk about some of the other reasons that there might, that might come up a little bit later. But I would say five. Expect probably four. When I did DeWitt Township, we did end up, I think, interviewing all five, if I remember right. It was a long day, but it was a very productive day.
So who eliminates the 17?
So I'm going to narrow it down. I'm going to do the first review. I'm going to say of everything that we have all discussed, based on your job description, based on your profile, here's who I believe are the ones that meet your qualifications and what you're looking for. Let's call it 12. We come into that closed session. We're going to work through that pool. You're usually, not usually, you will see them in usually a couple tiers. These are the ones that are typically high alignment. This group is, you know what, they're strong candidates, but they might be missing something. And then usually I'll have a third group of, okay, they may not have everything, but they have something that you may or may not feel the need to look at. That's typically how I present it.
Okay.
You're welcome. Again, whether we do this over one or two days, we'll talk about. The next part is the deliberations in selecting your candidate. Again, we can do this in different ways. I had, the last two that I've done, deliberations were right after interviews. One, they wanted to do that, at least for the one. The other one, we had planned on deliberating at their next council meeting, but they felt so strongly after the interview process, they felt they had strong consensus, they decided to work through the discussion, and they made a selection that night. We can structure that any way. We can also maintain flexibility so you could do it either way, depending on how the day plays out.
So if you have four candidates, we're down to four. Could we like do a piece of paper where you put your number one, two, three, or four, and then tally them all together and see who ends up the top couple?
Yeah, I've done that before, and we did that in DeWitt Township. And what we ended up doing is the top two candidates, we brought back the next day. So this was on a Saturday and Sunday, I think we did it. The second day was all scenario-based questions. So versus a typical interview question, which I'm not going to give you a super typical, but let's just use an example. What's your greatest weakness? Okay. Instead, the next day, we were like, you were in a council meeting and an issue blindsided you that you weren't expected because, you know, something popped up in the community. It created whatever situation. How would you work through that process? Those are the types of questions we used in day two. The last, when I did Dundee, we kind of merged those types of questions into the interview process. And then last but not least, once the offer is made, you're going to, we got to go into negotiations. How we go into negotiations, we'll need some direction from you. I'll share with you when we get into that discussion how we have done the last couple. But we're here to support you through that whole piece. The soonest, we could probably have something together is July 8th. That's pushing it based on the last couple negotiations I've been involved in. More likely, we're talking your second meeting in July. Again, that's if everything works out beautifully. Questions on, oh, and then onboarding, we'll talk more about later. Any questions on the hiring process timeline and the steps? We'll dive into interview process more in just a minute. All set?
Just have one question.
Yes.
Are we going to run into the Fourth of July holiday with that?
I don't think so because the way the Fourth falls, it's, what is it, a Thursday or Friday this year?
Friday.
Friday, yeah. The 26th and 27th end up being essentially a week prior to July 4th. So I think we'll be okay.
Well, you've got, oh, I mean, you've got July 2 plus on that deliberation.
Right. Basically, what I'm getting at there is, are we going to deliberate after, right after we get done with interviews that day? Are we going to put it on your first meeting of the month, if you don't cancel it, obviously? Or are we going to be looking at a date further out? There is risks to delaying a deliberation for too long. And if there's questions on that later, but in summary, the more time you wait, the more time there is for people to calendar or another place they're interviewing comes in with an offer first. There's a lot of different things that I've seen play out. So I'm going to talk a little bit about some optics and some observations that we've had as we've gone through this and provide you the context of why I'm bringing this on table today and what I'm asking you to do some reflection on. So first and foremost, I want to talk about this word cohesion. I've been using this word more and more, especially as I look back at my career as a city manager and some things that I wish I would have done a little bit differently, lessons from my colleagues, some great experiences serving as interim. Cohesion was a word that we worked on a lot, particularly in the city of Berkeley, when I was brought in there as an interim. So what is cohesion? It refers to the action or fact of formulating a united whole. It can also describe the sticking together of particles of the same substance. Synonyms include unity, togetherness, solidarity, bond, and continuity. Now, in the municipal world, it's got a little bit of a different meaning because we know not every single decision is going to be united. You're not always going to agree. That's kind of the purpose of having an elected body, right? But let's play this out a little further. We're going to talk a little bit about when there is an absence or perceived absence of cohesion. And disclaimer, every elected body that I have ever seen, and I doubt there is a perfect elected body out there at any level of government, that is not dealing with some level of gaps in cohesion. This has been an issue even before I was in the profession. It continues to grow, especially as we look at some other pressures that I'll talk about later as it affects the pool. This is a resource that I was, I first learned about when I had, was in a community that was struggling with some cohesion issues. This is a resource from, if you ever heard of the author, Patrick Lencioni. He wrote a book called The Five Dysfunctions of a Team. This is done in the converse and used for training. So in other words, this is the five characteristics of a cohesive team. A friend of mine, Nancy, does training around this, and this is, and she's the one I first learned about this from. But essentially cohesion, if you think about it as this pyramid that's up here, the baseline of that to build cohesion is you have to have trust. You have to have conflict, but not conflict where we're standing there and arguing, or we're disagreeing to disagree. We're talking about constructive dialogue. We're talking about constructive conflict. You need to have commitment. We have to have ideals, goals, vision, mission, all those things that we are following, are not following behind, but we are rallying behind. I mean, you have your charter, right? You have your annual budget, but when we're committing to a decision, we need to have that larger basis point. There's also something that, I've seen this everywhere, council makes a decision, right? But then the folks that may not vote against or vote for something, don't move on. Ultimately, and yes, this is a little bit principled, yes, I am biased, right? Understand that, please. But theoretically, how this should work is once the body makes a decision, we move on and we implement it, or we respond to it. Ethically speaking, as a city manager, that's what they have to do. They have to adhere to the decisions and the policy directions of the council. Whether everybody agrees with it or not, whether the community agrees with it or not, that is their ethical duty and their duty as outlined in the job description. Then you have accountability, basically committing to a clear plan, holding ourselves accountable. And accountability does not necessarily mean a negative. And I think that's what some of these words that you see up here, we automatically go to the negative, but that's not what cohesion is all about. And then obviously results. You have to, you have to be able to produce those results. Without these things building up towards results, you're not going to be able to reach your optimal level of operation that you want to get to. And so as we start to think about the context, and I'll start to think about that in the context of bringing on a new municipal executive, right? And how they are going to be trying to support a more cohesive operation. They will not be able to do it on their own. They will need the elected body, they will need the staff, they will need the community because right out the gate, they're going to be drinking out of a fire hose. And then working to learn, all of you, learn your priorities, learn what you're not, what you don't prioritize, learn your absolute yeses and your absolute nos and all the things in between, right? So the couple that I'm really zeroing in on, you know, these are from talking with you all as a group, talking with you individually, and having Zach go through and look at some of your other meetings, there's definitely big gaps in trust amongst these seven individuals. That's very difficult to work with. It's not impossible to solve, but trust isn't built or rebuilt or improved or any of those things overnight. It takes time. It takes everybody making a commitment. We'll talk about that a little bit more later. The other one that I wanted to touch on is conflict. And again, the way I'm looking at it is constructive. It's, it appears that this body, and again, I want to give the context for the folks that are listening, this is not the only body that has had challenges in this. I've worked with multiple elected bodies that have had challenges having constructive dialogue, especially on those very contentious items, at every scale, right? I could tell that there was something when I walked in the door that first meeting. You can, especially when you've been in this business, you feel it. You can recognize it when you see it. I probably could have told you that there was some conflict without even opening my eyes and just feeling the room and listening. But these are all things that can be worked on and need to be reflected on and worked on, and I'm going to tell you a little bit more why. So I want to talk to you about the state of the profession. Despite what I just told you about your candidate pool, there's also other realities that we all have to keep in mind, especially us as a recruiter, especially my group, because we have a strong passion for this profession and trying to bring people into public service. We're seeing, as some of the things that are impacting the candidate pools and the communities that are searching candidates or seeking leaders, retirements. I mean, I think ever since I walked in the profession, everybody was talking about the silver tsunami. It's not quite happened that way. It's more of like a, like an incoming tide. I guess it'd be more of a receding tide, I guess. I don't know. But I'm seeing more and more seasoned managers that are retiring, which is changing our pools. Where we're seeing more experienced that might be looking to move on, kind of what we were talking about earlier, we're seeing that a lot from your non-traditional candidates. More seasoned managers are not necessarily bouncing around anymore like they used to. Back in the day, when I first got in, you would always be following certain people that you knew, their career. I had friends of mine, every two, three, four years, they were moving and they were working up the ladder. That's not exactly happening like that anymore, and there's reasons for that, which we'll get to some of it, but pay is going up. Communities are recognizing more and more the value of the person they have. Sometimes the grass isn't always greener, and they're compensating for that, which has people looking. You also do have some folks that play the game, you know, I'm going to go into a search and I'm going to try to leverage that to stay where I'm at, but make more money. That happens in every profession. Yes, Tom? That happens in every profession, yes, Tom.
Is a town this size typically gonna be a stepping stone?
Yes and no. One thing that you made very clear, you as a group talked about you not looking for someone that's looking for a stepping stone, but it's very hard to hold somebody back. As I'm vetting people, I'm gonna be looking for people that are going to want to put in the time and effort, but to expect a city manager to come in and say, "I will be here absolutely five years minimum." You might get some to say that, but you know what? If that awesome opportunity comes up that they've always wanted and they don't have to move, they're probably gonna look at it. But to your benefit, you have things, obviously the setting, you don't get that a lot, you have a competitive pay, that's gonna continue to be, that's gonna continue to be an issue in all communities. There are things that will keep somebody here. The challenges or weaknesses or the things that we need to work on, those are the types of things that are gonna make it more difficult for someone to stay here for that term. But I don't, it's not like, you're not like the sub-one-thousand population where they're used to turning every two years. I don't think that's something you have to worry about here. You might have, you might only expect five years, but I think under the right conditions with the right person, you could get more than five years out of somebody. Young professionals entering, not as many as I remember. I mean, there's a lot fewer young people at the conferences than when I was a young person coming into this profession. There's a lot of different reasons for that. Some of them fall into some of the challenges they're facing communities, but it's a lot harder to be a public servant these days. It's not always fun, not that any job is always fun, but it's a lot harder to dig deep and find those rewards that keep you sane and keep you wanting to come back every day to do the work. I have multiple colleagues that have either taken temporary or permanent breaks. What do I mean by that? Colleagues that have left the profession because they need a break from it. It's not that they're gone forever, but they just had to step away. Family, personal health is way more important. When I first entered the profession, I'm probably guilty of it now, work first, right? Doesn't matter. I don't care about my mental health, I don't care about my family, I need to get the work done, I got this deadline, I got this deadline, I got this council meeting, I got this special meeting, I gotta make all this stuff work. I don't know if I want to say the majority yet, but the attention being put on work-life balance, or I have a colleague that calls it something different, but trying to avoid the burnout, all those things, there's a lot more focus on that than there used to be when I first came in. And I'm not gonna lie to you, my firm's one of the folks that we're pushing this more because of what we're hearing when we talk to folks, whether in interviews or when we're doing coaching. The loss of mobility, it's not that you won't find a candidate that's going to move, it's just a lot harder. We talked about this, I think, at our first meeting. It's really expensive to try to pick up and move your family these days, to buy a house. I couldn't buy the house I'm in right now today. There's no way, there's no possible way that I could do it. You also have two working family households, it's very hard to break that up. I mean, usually if you've got a significant other, it's like, okay, we can go forty-five minutes this way, we can go forty-five minutes this way, but that's it, right? You have a lot more of that. So what are some of the things that are making it hard for communities to attract leaders? Turnover history, that's a big one that I get asked about, and this was an issue I dealt with one of my recent clients. They had been through three city managers in six years, and they knew that was not sustainable. And they knew that they had some things that they needed to work on, and they were united in the sense of, yes, they still have work to do, but at least they all said, "We have a problem, we're going to work to address it." That really helped when we were talking to candidates. We have a client that we're just about done with, it looks like they're gonna hire our placement permanently. Twenty managers in sixteen years? I think that's the number. When you get that reputation, you will never lose it. That's why, another reason why I'm here talking with you all today. You don't want to get that reputation. Civility. We had uncivil meetings when I was first coming into the profession, they've always been there. Frequency is a lot more. The passion behind civility and incivility is a lot higher than I've ever seen it, and I've seen some really passionate people. And it's gotten to the point where it's a little scary at times. And I've had people that have been legit scared, where we've had to have officers walk them out to the car, all that kind of stuff. I don't know why, it's just there. I have my thoughts, more about platforms than people, I just, you know, I just. I haven't been on Facebook for a long time, I think I told you, Isaac. I love it, it's great, it's the best thing I ever did. The politics is creeping into local government more and more. Read your charter. These are nonpartisan positions. Just about most of your local governments, there are some small communities and stuff that do have partisan positions. Now, that's not to say you can't have your Republican, Democratic, left, right, whatever. Doesn't mean you can't have your ideals, right? That's not what nonpartisan means. But we have seen more and more actual party politics playing out at local boards. I don't care what side of the aisle on or if you're in between, it doesn't matter, it's just it's happening. I'm aware of communities where you have party chairs that go to local government meetings to ensure certain folks vote a certain way. That's not what's in the charter, right? Your daily lives, there is no chart, there is no political right and wrong way to do public safety, just a thought. And then the cohesion piece. There is more and more struggles at the elected level, even with staff, right? There's staff cohesion issues. I saw it when I went into other communities, and I've seen cohesion issues between elected bodies and staff. These are things that a candidate's going to look at, and these are the things, when you get those reputations, it does make it harder for folks to want to take a risk, especially if they are in a pretty good place and they're making decent money. For one of the searches I did, I talked with a candidate that was named specifically by some council members, that they really wanted to see them in the pool. This would have been a very significant raise. I won't say how much, but very significant. This person didn't want anything to do with it because they'd watched meetings. Significant dollars. I'm not talking fiber tariff, I'm talking significant. They didn't want to do it because their family, their health, their daily life was more important than a dollar. I think some of that's generational, but I think that's also something with the times as well. Okay. So far, we're doing pretty good on time. So this is a pretty common scenario that I'm putting on your radar because we're getting to the point where we're gonna start talking and having meetings and getting this process really rolling. So I'm a candidate, I'm looking for a job, I'm doing my research, and I'm seeing the cohesion of an organization, whether it's elected, whether it's staff, because, trust me, the staff reputations get out there as well. The combination of the two together, community, what the community's like, all of that are things that a candidate's going to look at. They probably were already watching before your current city manager decided they were leaving, right? Since that announcement came out, I will guarantee you, there have been people that have been watching. And now that the search has been officially posted, they've been watching and they've gone back to watch some more. Now you look at split votes. And I'm not talking that every vote has to be unanimous, that's not what I'm saying. But what candidates will look at is the context of those split votes. Why are those split votes happening? Is it, well, it's just a tough issue and they just disagreed? They're gonna see that. Oh, that makes a ton of sense, this was just a contentious issue, just really hard to find, you know, more consensus, et cetera. But they'll pick up on, is it a philosophical reason? Is it a party reason? Is it an in spite of reason? All of those, everything you can think of, they will pick up on it, especially the very serious candidates that are considering wanting to walk away from a good situation. They're gonna be the ones that are probably doing the most research. Neither one of those things alone are necessarily deal breakers or anything like that, because they're common, but when you start to put those things together, that's gonna likely have a candidate hitting the pause button, especially as we get later in the process. Now, that's not gonna say they're gonna walk away, I'm not saying that. But what I am saying is, they're probably gonna take a little longer to make a decision, especially if they're offered the job. You're probably, if that's the case, you're probably gonna see a longer negotiation process, and they're probably gonna be trying to negotiate more risk averse language. So what do I mean by more risk averse language? They're probably gonna come in and ask for a higher dollar amount, they're probably gonna come in and ask for a higher than what you might be used to severance, which is kind of happening anyway, but you're probably gonna see those things, all the way up to, you know what, "I really appreciate the opportunity, but after further reflecting, I'm gonna have to withdraw my candidacy." All of those things and everything in between is something that can happen. And it's not just cohesion, split votes, but I'm just telling you as a former candidate, those were a couple of things that I would spend my most, the most time on besides reading news articles. Questions so far? All right. So the vetting process itself, we've touched on this a little bit, but it's more than an interview. And so now's the part, I'm gonna be asking for some participation. Hope you guys are ready. Nothing too difficult. But why do we do interviews? I want to hear from you guys. Why do you, why do you think we do an interview? Why don't we just, you know, go out there and say, "Okay, this person's LinkedIn profile looks great, check, that's our new city manager." I'm sorry.
See how they answer under pressure.
Personality.
First impressions? And second?
I like that you said second. Because some of the best hiring decisions I made were based on second impressions, not first. I don't know why I'm shaking my pencil at you. Personality came up, what else?
Well, how to gain confidence that they can do the job. I don't know why you'd find that out in an interview, I mean, because you don't really find it out till they do it.
Like to see what their level of enthusiasm is.
That's a good one. Because you will tell. You will be able to see through somebody faking it. Who's there because they really want the job and who's there because they need to do an interview for one way, shape, or form. You know, another reason that comes to my mind is trust but verify, right? I might do all, everything I can, but maybe somebody's a really good writer and a really good on-screen presence and I miss something. Something comes out in the interview process or what have you. So we want to kind of verify that they are who they say they are, who we've said they are through the process. Anything else come to mind?
I guess part for them to see us, right?
Yeah. That is also a good one, because I don't know if I specifically mentioned this in here, but you're right. They are also interviewing you. I will be talking about later things you're gonna want to be ready for, but yes, they are interviewing you as well.
Proceed approachability.
Approachability.
Ability to answer questions sincerely, sincerity. That's probably our good cover.
Yeah. You can tell when somebody's answering genuinely. You'll know when somebody's, your BS meter will go off multiple times during interviews, right?
Essentially, you go with your gut. I mean, you can know it.
Kind of that gut check.
We've all been around, we all know, and, you know, some are a little better than others, depending on what you do and how you're able to determine, something set off a little thing in the corner, you know, something's chirping in your ear over you, that's probably right.
One word kind of flagged something that, you know what, maybe has a groove when we're going in through deliberations we gotta talk about and dive into. Did you hear this too, right? And we'll talk about the deliberations and what have you. Go ahead, Tom.
Do they demonstrate problem-solving ability?
How are they gonna think on their feet? How are they gonna act when stuff hits the fan, right? You know, in this case, this community has seen multiple very tough situations, natural disasters. How are they gonna work through something like that? Are you gonna have the confidence in this person that they can lead, not only the staff but the community, in a time of crisis? Anything else hitting you? So as we go, I guess this is starting to sound a little bit repetitive, but what are you hoping to get out of the vetting process? So now I want you to think beyond interviews. What do you want to understand better about this person? Some of this stuff, I can go back to our group and individual interviews, we've talked about key characteristics and all that. But what is, what is it that you're looking for through this vetting process and what would help you get that information? I'm being a little bit, what's the word I'm looking for, coin? But I want to give you all the answers, yeah. Because I have my biases and what I think.
I think for me, strength of character.
Strength of character.
We, you know, as a community, we have, we have some things that need to be dealt with and, you know, are they gonna be able to be strong enough to do it, given some of the circumstances that we have?
What would help you assess that person's strength and character?
Well, I'd like to know what they might think of as a challenging situation. In my mind, I'd compare that to, you know, some of the city issues we've had.
And walk up to a story problem, essentially. Give them a scenario and see how it plays out.
Well, and my thought, Jeff, was if they give us something back that I think that's not an issue.
What kind of problem can they show that they have solved in their previous job or whatever? A big challenge that the city faced and how they walk through.
Outside of the interview process, is there anything that you would be looking, is there any other way that you would want to be trying to glean that information from that candidate outside of the interview process?
Past practice.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Past practice.
Past practice?
We search it out and just let they do it?
Yeah.
Shoot, go on social media.
Well, now you've given me like, I got a light going off, we'll make sure we talk about before we wrap up here. It's not a bad thing, it's a timing thing.
Doesn't mean that it's a fact, you won't.
Well, there's that too.
Success in building consensus.
Steve?
Yes. Good job. There's two of us.
What's gonna help you, what's gonna help this candidate demonstrate for you that they can create success and create cohesion?
Well, that was probably what Jeff was getting at, what they, how they've done things in the past, you know, a record of success. Like, say that we really needed, the police department needed to get a new cruiser and to convince people, convince the council that we need to spend this money to get a new cruiser for the police department or a new tractor for the DPW or something like that. And I think, I think Scott has done that real well, I think that he did that real well with this leak pickup thing, you know, that was kind of, I don't know whose idea that was originally, but that, to me, that turned out to be a really good thing and pretty much everybody agreed on that after he presented it.
Able to justify your acting.
Anything else that you're thinking, like, this is like the thing I gotta get out of this process, I need to feel comfortable with X?
I'd like them to come forward with the feeling that they were the person for the job, and they wanted to convince us that we should be hiring them because they're the ones that we need to have. And they're excited about that opportunity to, to do that.
That would kinda tell you that maybe they're gonna stick around for a while too, if they...
Who would help you get there?
Just the, the way they presented themselves, their enthusiasm for the, for the interview, for the, for the opportunity to, to come here and working with this council and this community.
I think going along with the enthusiasm is also going back for me to curiosity. Are they interested in learning about the city, about us, and, and working towards being, being able to build, um, cohesion? But, um, also with respect to Steve's comment about, um, building a consensus, that's different than convincing, I think. I think somebody that can look at both sides of an issue and figure out how to present the situation so that council can discuss it in both directions, not just make a decision outside and say, okay, now I've gotta convince people to go this way. So it's a little bit different, um, building consensus than convincing, but similar.
Debbie, what would, what would help you see that a candidate has that ability to, um, build consensus?
To be able to present a situation in multiple, you know, maybe in multiple scenarios. So, um, showing the positives and negatives of the situation and not just all of the reasons why you should or shouldn't do something. So looking at it and being able to discuss both, both angles.
Anybody else have any that they wanna throw out?
I would be very excited to hear how they could help us with our positive vision for our city. How, how they could help us specifically.
Are you thinking, um, you thinking internally or externally?
I'd say mostly externally, but, but maybe internally. I'm not sure. You know, not, not department-wise as much, but, you know, certainly just, you know, we, we all decided to run because we care about our community, we know our residents care about the community. How, how can you help us achieve the, the positive vision that, um, that we have evidenced in our master plans and our, you know, and our goals and things?
So point is, you want somebody, and tell me if I'm wrong. Part of what I think I'm hearing you say is you want somebody that can tell and share Whitehall's story with, not just with the community, but those outside. And that storytelling comes into play, yes, in visitor attraction, resident attraction, business attraction, getting attention for grants, all these different things. That's what I'm hearing you say.
Well, that's, no, that's not what I'm saying.
That's not what you're saying, okay?
But I like that, so keep that.
Okay, I'll keep that, but I wanna make sure that I am hearing you correctly.
Well, I, I think we have so much to offer in this community. And I think, you know, everybody who has signed up to, to participate, you know, staff-wise, city council, and then, you know, we've got, you know, regulars who come to our meetings, there's people who don't come, who care. But I, I feel like in some ways, we're just short of kind of who we could be. Does that help?
Yes. Okay. So I'm gonna share you just a couple philosophies before we get into talking about, uh, the actual, the design, we'll say, of the interview process. Um, this is your process, right? I'm here to help facilitate your process. I might share with you ideas or thoughts on how to conduct that process, but ultimately, this is your decision on how you wanna structure this. Only the council gets to hire this person, right? You can involve everybody, you and their brother and sister, but ultimately, it's your decision, okay? Staff doesn't get the decision, it's just seven around the table. That's not to say that there's not opportunities and there's not value in having additional, um, viewpoints and impressions in the vetting process. I've seen elected bodies that wanna take kind of a minimalist approach. You know what, this is our decision, this is what we're elected to do, um, set us up with a great internal process. We've seen clients, and I've seen other examples that we haven't worked on, where it's a huge process, and you've got all kinds of, um, and I will not lie to you, some of them are a little gimmicky, but you'll have all kinds of different events and tests and all kinds of things. Um, we're kind of, where we like to land, where we think the sweet spot is, is somewhere in between. And you all are gonna know what is the right, uh, approach for you and your community. Uh, so let me share with you just some of the things that we could do. Um, uh, again, as you're thinking about what would help you make an informed decision and a decision you can be confident in, I would think about it in the context of also how much time you wanna put into this. And I don't mean that in negative, but are we trying to get this all done in one day? Are we comfortable with putting people up at a hotel for a night and doing it over a course of two days? Do we wanna spread it out, that you're gonna come in this week and then this week? Again, there's risks to how far you spread things out, but think about the timing in the back of your mind. So, some of the different things that we've done, only one of these pictures is actually from ours, uh, but I'm bad at taking pictures. But, um, I feel, and again, I am biased. I feel it's very important for a candidate to get a sense of the operation. And the people that are gonna be able to provide the best sense of the operation is gonna be the people in the operation. So in the bottom-left corner, um, this is the, the, um, Village of Dundee, which was the most recent search I worked on. I had another picture almost put in here. Uh, but we all hopped in a van that the, uh, local car dealer provided. Uh, the gentleman in the gray jackets, the interim village manager, he drove. All three candidates were in the same vehicle, which I find very interesting, and then I was in the back. Um, we went around and observed their major, um, facilities, especially areas where there were big projects coming or, uh, problems that need to be addressed. So here, we are at their wastewater treatment plant, which was in need of some, uh, large investments. Um, but as you can see here, um, this, this tour or this, um, uh, process, it's not just the wastewater plant operator that's in these pictures. If you look really closely, uh, you're gonna see the deputy police chief, um, you're gonna see the deputy clerk. Um, I can't remember who else was with us that drove separately. I think their engineer, uh, was on site. Um, but again, it gives the opportunity for the candidates to ask more questions that they're not gonna find online. It's gonna help give them a sense of who these people are, that they'd be coming in to lead. Um, and quite honestly too, it's an opportunity to see if anybody gets scared off. Um, personally, I like it when all the candidates are interacting together, because at least from my experience, seeing how the candidates treat each other is a good indicator as far as how they're gonna operate within the community and within the organization.
They'll be a little competitive here, if I'm sure.
You know what, but in this particular case, they had, they, they razzed each other a little bit, but they got, I mean, you could see these people getting together for years. Yeah, oh, it's great.
In a situation like that, can you typically pick out one guy that asks the best questions? With the deepest questions or something?
Yes, but usually I see where the candidates, they're not always the one asking the deepest, most reflective questions. A lot of times, it's gonna be based on, you know what, I have a wastewater background per se, or I was involved in this question, or I am fascinated by the processes you use. Whereas another candidate might be, uh, like one of the, the candidate that they ultimately selected in Dundee, is he came from a rural community where he had to deal with grain elevators and train blocking traffic and all that stuff. He brought up an issue about that, whereas all the other candidates didn't, right? Um, so it, it's typically gonna be different for each candidate. But I think there's only one case where I've ever had one where I'm like, okay, that person doesn't have a shot. Because they were very quiet, they were very timid, there was not a lot of interaction, that's a pretty strong indicator. Um, and we don't have to get into it tonight, but there's ways that we would collect that input to you that would be in a way that's not going to out anybody, that it's gonna be done in a more positive light. I don't wanna, I don't mean positive so much as like, this person's awesome and we're only gonna talk about how awesome they are. I'll talk a little bit about how we want to vet and talk about candidates. Uh, we've used roundtables, uh, before. Uh, we've done this with staff, we've done this with stakeholders. Um, but in a roundtable, um, you could do it a couple different ways. There's your traditional roundtable, where we, we just get together and we just chat. There's the agenda-driven roundtable, where we, which is what I've used in the last couple, where we give them a topic they need to be ready to discuss. And whoever's participating in that roundtable, whether it's staff, stakeholders, whomever, uh, we prepare them, make sure they know what that topic is. Um, and the expectation, uh, of the candidate is to lead this discussion, not just participate in the discussion. We'll have, it's usually not me, in this case for you guys, as long as the veil would probably be Zach, would be in there to watch all this stuff, and then there's a debrief with the stakeholder group afterwards, to see how this person worked through it. A really cool idea that April's doing, with the search she's doing right now, is more the upper-middle picture. They're gonna do a mock department head meeting. Instead of doing the whole tour, cuz they're on a more truncated timeline, they're gonna do a mock department head meeting, and they're gonna focus, uh, on an actual situation that was on a, a recent agenda, uh, in this community. And, uh, I think it's like a 25-minute discussion. I think Zach's gonna be helping her with that one, and again, they'll have a facilitated debrief. Um, there is the candidate open house, um, that's usually something, uh, that's done, uh, not everywhere. Uh, in this case, this was, uh, one I was at when I was interim in Berkeley. This is an opportunity to kinda see how candidates operate in uncomfortable situations. I don't know about you guys, uh, I might fool you at times. I don't like going into unfamiliar situations and trying to start up conversations and all that kinda stuff. It's not my favorite. I force myself to do it. Um, it's a great way to see how the candidates operate, um, especially as staff. But even as council, like in, in the case in Berkeley, most of the time, the mayor and the council members that were there were more off to the side, observing, versus being involved in all the different conversations. Now, they were in conversation with themselves or with constituents, cuz now everybody knows everybody and they're talking. But that can be a fun one, especially if, um, community engagement is a priority, uh, of yours. Um, then you also have the very uncomfortable, and I use this picture, cuz this really kinda gives you guys the dynamic of the actual interview day. It's usually set up like this, kinda like when I was here at our last meeting, you're all up on the dais, and I'm at the table, at least I was standing. These folks are gonna be sitting. It can be a little awkward, it can be a little intimidating. It's one of the reasons why I wanted to have you in this environment, especially as we talk about interaction, cohesion, all that stuff. This should feel very different to you than when you're sitting at the dais. I'll, I'll talk more about that later. The point being, there's, in the interview process, there's a lot of ways to get from the start to the finish. We can take a nice, simple, direct route, or we can take the scenic detour, right? So that's where I wanna spend a little bit of time talking about, what are the components that you would like to see? What are the voices that you wanna hear? What is the data that you wanna have gathered? What is the input that would help inform your, uh, decision?
Could we have a little video from the candidate, just to give us a little bio? Would that be okay?
We could probably definitely do something like that. We haven't, that's not to say, every candidate's got the ability to do it these days, whether it's phone or computer. I would just want to make sure whatever we did there, they're all doing the same thing.
Yeah.
They're all responding to the same question, uh, whatever happened to be. Um, that is, uh, let me put some thought into that one, to see how we could do that most effectively.
Just, just a real short, you know, this is who I am, it, and, you know, here's why I'm interested. I like to do, I overthink and I like to over-prepare. So coming into a situation, I think having at least, like, seeing the person and getting a sense would be helpful. Short.
That makes sense. What else?
Nate, are you asking us which type of process we wanna see?
Yes, I wanna get a sense of how, complex is the wrong word, but that's the one I'm gonna use. How many pieces do you wanna have to this process? Because unless you want me up here every day for a whole week, and we're gonna try to have candidates here for a whole week, which isn't gonna happen, the world is yours, right? Consider you having access to me and these candidates for up to two days full. What would you, what would you want that to look like? Do you agree, disagree that there should be an operational component to it, a, a, a community orientation? Should the community be involved? If they're involved, in what way? Um, again, what is gonna give you those points of input that will, that gives you information that you want to have for this certain process? So yes, essentially, I'm asking, what are the pieces that we wanna put together? What is our route to get to that final deliberation selection? Do we wanna just go to interviews and deliberate? Or do we wanna, you know, we're gonna go up, we're gonna orient them, we're gonna do some staff stuff, we're gonna, uh, build in some roundtables as a part of interview day? Cuz I don't like candidates sitting still if we're gonna have them do these things. So it's usually like, if you're gonna do that, it's on a rotating basis, right? One candidate's interviewing, the other one's doing this roundtable, and the other one's at this or whatever happens to be. So that's, that's essentially what I'm getting at. And if you want, I can just put something together for you. You just tell me, what, we want them here for two days? We want it to be, uh, we want it to maximize their time. I'll put together a draft and send it out for some reaction. Um, but we won't be able to do all things within those couple days, or day. Go ahead, Tom.
Just about swallowed my coffee. It seems to me that if you do a lot of community involvement, or some community involvement, that would not be the best, it, it just, my opinion is that that would maybe skew an opinion too far one way or the other, depending on if you're gonna talk to three people, five people, or what. It, it seems like, um, the people in the council know the town better and could give a better impression of things than talking with a very small group of, of residents.
You bring up a very good point. Um, and this is why not every community does this, right? Because the residents, this is just the fact of the charter, don't vote on a city manager. They vote on a mayor, they vote on council members. They vote on you to represent them, to make the best decisions you can make. That's what representative democracy is, right? So to your point, when a community wants to have input or, or data from other groups, this is how we tend to deliver that, unless we're told otherwise, but I fight back really hard. I don't give you that data or that feedback until after you interview these candidates. And the reason we do that is I don't wanna give you something that now biases you against a certain candidate because your best friend in town says this person's a bozo. I want you to interview that person first. Now you're starting to kinda, you know, get some of your ideas in your head, right? Now we start to introduce some additional information, right? That's how it would be done, whether it's community or even staff. That input does not come until after we interview and, uh, before deliberation. That's how we would do it if you wanted us to do it.
It sounds good to me.
And also to your point, it's gotta be structured, right? An open house is an open house. We collect comic cards, what have you. That's very different than, um, uh, one thing we did, this was, uh, Traverse City DDA. So very, it's very community-oriented, business-oriented. We brought in, uh, uh, community stakeholders, uh, like various leaders from nonprofits and other organizations that the, uh, DDA director worked with on a regular basis, and we ran them through a roundtable. Very structured, not open-ended. Very structured, not open-ended, what have you. It's designed to gather feedback, facilitated feedback. So you, again, you're trying to put those layers in there to try to eliminate bias and make sure we're giving you constructive feedback, not, you know, shot from the hip, this person's an idiot or whatever it happens to be, right? That's how it would kinda come together. Thoughts?
I see this as having an informal and a formal process. I see an informal would be like, and I think it's a good idea, the, the bus tour of the city with all three of them. And I see that as more of an informal. You're kinda watching them, seeing how they interact with everybody, you know, the questions aren't really canned. I mean, it's just, you hear the moment questions, see how they answer. And then, like I said, there's a formal component. I, I consider a roundtable, or a roundtable would be more formal, um, uh, just a meet the, meet the city type of thing would be more of an informal. But I think both processes would need to be covered for us to do this and get it, get it right.
Thoughts on what Jeff just said? Jeff, right?
Yeah, could, could there be a thing at the end of the day where we have all the department heads and, uh, and the city council and the three, four candidates, whatever it is, have a sandwich and cookies and, uh, you know, stuff like that, like in this room or something? And just, people can just kinda wander around and mingle and see how they talk with everybody and see how they interact.
Absolutely, you can do that. Uh, if council's gonna be there, it's gonna be posted, um, gotta do that. So it'd be, uh, I'd work with Will on the language, but, um, the way I've seen it posted elsewhere, uh, which I had never seen before I was in Traverse City, they'll, they'll post, um, uh, because there might be a quorum. Because you guys, I mean, um,
Okay, I see.
If it's an open house, everybody's got different work hours and what have you, you may not all be there at the same time. But just in case there is a quorum, I've seen in a couple of places, they'll post it that way. Or again, I'm gonna defer to your attorney on this. We're gonna post it as a workshop for the purpose of conducting an open house for city manager candidates, something along those lines.
Well, it's just an idea, I don't know if it actually works, you know, just something popped in my head, so.
I, it's been done, and where that, uh, can work is particularly in communities, um, where it's a big priority for the elected body or the community itself. Uh, a lot of times you'll see that in larger communities, uh, um, and then, uh, again, I would think through, how do we gather input? If we're gonna provide that, or it might just be an op, uh, open house where we're observing. You can do that too, you make your own rules, right? Um, and then again, where, if we're starting to think that this is gonna be more than council and, um, uh, staff, do we need a bigger space? Okay, if we need a bigger space, you need a playhouse, it's downtown somewhere. Um, you know, we did one, uh, we didn't have a great turnout. Uh, it was, you know, Friday, beautiful day in Traverse City, but when we did the DDA tour, we ended the tour at the brewery. I invited, uh, the business community out. Um, like again, we can, we can design this any way you want. It's about the environment that you wanna create. Um, we can make it casual, we can make it, I, I mean, candidates are gonna do what they want, but I would tend to have it, it'll be a little more casual, because when we're here on day one touring the community, you know, we might be going to different places. I usually tell them business casual and then what they're most comfortable with on interview day. But most times they're gonna be in suits or jackets or skirt, whatever it happens to be. What's council think about, uh, that open house concept?
I think community involvement is, is an absolute necessity, um, at least in some, um, in some capacity. I don't know how an open house would work, or if you would do a roundtable sort of thing at the open house where it's a little bit more, um, constructed rather than just mix around and mingle. Um, it's easy to get a monopoly, you know, somebody starts talking and you can't get them to move on so that you can get a word in. Um, so I don't know if there's some more structure we could put around the open house setting, but, um, I like the idea of that feedback being collected and shared with us later, so we're not biased at the beginning. But I think we have to, um, get some community involvement.
Maybe just some comment cards on a table?
Yeah.
I, um, probably can't do this, but I think it'd be nice to bill it as a thank you for them to come to our community, meet people, I did, that sounds kinda nicer than an open house.
So, believe it or not, that's, that kinda stuff is noticed. Um, I, I can tell you anytime I've interviewed, I've never gotten one, but the last couple of places we've been at, uh, it started with DeWitt Township. They were, they loved the candidates so much, they're like, we need to send them a personal thank you. Even a simple thank you, even if they're not selected, people will remember that about Whitehall.
Well, it's, it's, it's work for them, I would say, right?
And, I mean, with what Tanya's describing, um, my, my initial thinking is maybe this is something that we look at doing in collaboration. I don't know what your relationship is with your chamber, but it might be something where we can get the chamber and the community involved a little bit, almost like a little bit of a taste of Whitehall type thing. Um, we tried to do that, well, I wasn't doing the search, but they, they were gonna try to do that a little bit with, uh, Berkeley and it just, it was too short of a notice. But we're far enough out, we could probably start having some conversations. So I haven't heard any opposition to some of these ideas. So what I'm hearing so far is we wanna orient these folks to the community. We wanna introduce them to our operations. We wanna have some sort of an open house at the end of that kinda internal informal process. Um, so that open house is kind of like, we're starting the transition to the informal. It's kinda, it's neither one or the other. And then on interview day, uh, if we do split this over two days, are you guys comfortable? I mean, really, your, your involvement would be come to the open house that night if you want, and then the next day. That's where your time commitment comes. Is that something you all are comfortable with?
Are you or somebody on your staff, um, with the whole time?
We're with you the whole time. Yep, probably before the candidates arrive on Thursday, Friday, whatever the day is.
Um, I think that kind of an open house thing would be good. The thing that I would fear is that it would be overweighted just by the, um, downtown business owners. And that you wouldn't get a good spectrum of the community, you'd get one, you know, just that one side.
So let me ask you this, and this is not, I'm not asking this to try to pit one group against another. Are both groups, groups that you want having input in this? I'm not saying you would exclude anybody from the open house. Again, I wanna be very clear about that. What I'm getting at is gonna come after I, I hear kinda what you're thinking. Um, is the business community, when you say community involvement, is the business community a priority for this process for you all?
Residents first, this, this must.
Yes.
It, it's important, but, but you want the rest of the community to buy into it also.
Absolutely.
Well, you want people that care.
Right.
I mean, if people are apathetic and they don't really give a rip, well, they're not gonna pay any attention anyway, and they don't, so, uh.
But they'll complain later.
Well, and this is where, this is where maybe we.
Vote for somebody else.
This is maybe where we split, right? We're gonna be out and about touring the community, going through different operations, we're gonna be coming and going, all that kinda stuff. Maybe the business opportunity is during the day, you know, we've gotta feed them at some point. You know, maybe we go downtown somewhere or whatever, and it's, you know, light snacks somewhere, I don't know. Um, and we kinda build that as, hey, business community, this is your opportunity. Then we have the open house that night, community, residents, this is your opportunity. Um, are you gonna necessarily exclude anybody? No, but you're gonna bill it as this is business, this is community. And typically, that's gonna work out pretty well, cause again, typically, your business owners are gonna have a little more availability during the day, early in the day versus in the evening, vice versa. People are getting home. Now, you're still gonna not get everybody, cause the kids are doing everything and families are busy and vacations and all that good stuff.
But still, a walk around downtown would be great anyway.
Yep. Well, that's something we're gonna wanna do, uh, because that's definitely one of those combined challenges, opportunities that was on top of everybody's list, uh, or right there at the top. So here's what I'm hearing so far, and I will map this out further. Um, I'm hearing candidates come into town, uh, operational, community orientation. I'm hearing some sort of, uh, break, if you will, where business community's invited to, to come out. Uh, I'm hearing we're going to another piece of informal, and then we're wrapping up the day with, uh, an open house to the community where we're transitioning from informal to formal. And then on interview day itself, I'm hearing interviews. I've heard yes and no's on roundtable thoughts. They can work, they're not always necessary. Again, it depends on where, how you wanna see these folks, uh, show their muster. I try to avoid anything that's super gimmicky that candidates really hate. Candidates don't like being told three days before they need to prepare for, uh, a presentation on X. I would never do that to a candidate, again, unless I was forced to, but I would fight very, uh, visceral, or viciously, uh, to avoid that. But, but to be, to know when they're offered the interview, that part of the process is gonna be, they need to be prepared to have this discussion or to, um, participate in this activity. It's not outside the norm, they're gonna be here anyway. They'd rather be doing something like that than toiling their thumbs anyway, especially if it's to help better position them for a job. Um, rotating a couple of different things on interview day is pretty easy to do. Three things could still be done. Once we start getting more than that, now we're starting to talk about, I need to bring in extra people. Um, are we doing too much now? Are we, um, diluting, uh, uh, your role in this? So there is a balance that you wanna strike, for sure.
Could we ask them, like, how would they, and let them know the questions, cause they could prepare. But how, what would you suggest we could do to improve our, our downtown retail? Um, and the, and, and then, you know, just some of the things that have been in, in our discussions, like major topics?
Something like that. Um, typically, when I've done a roundtable, I'm focusing in on something that speaks directly to a priority everybody agrees on. Um, the downtown's a great example. I could see a lot of different ways we could ask that question. I could also see a number of different ways we could, um, for lack of a better word, staff that roundtable, who you would invite to be on that roundtable. It's probably a mix of, uh, Tifa, chamber, business owners, uh, um, maybe if you've got what we used to call, um, a hat trick, if you've got the. What is, what was the hat trick? The hat trick was the person is a resident, a business owner, and, oh, I think it was, it was the person, it was a resident, a business owner, and they were, they lived downtown. That was the way we used to call a hat trick when I was in one of my communities when I was young. So it's probably something like that. Um, uh, maybe it's planning commission member, I, it depends on who was, who was involved in helping you vision and implement your downtown strategy. So that is definitely one thing we could do.
I would like to include young people if at all possible. We have a new, um, owner, Hanson Hill, a new restaurant, Klein Dining, and he's a, well, younger, young man. And he lives in town and, and bought a restaurant and is running it. I'd like to, I'd like, like to make sure we include people with that background if at all, if possible.
Yeah, you definitely wanna try it.
Really young people, it's all, it's gonna be summer break, but some students would be great. And are you talking about having these roundtables happening while council's doing interviews of one and then the other ones?
Yeah, so probably the way this would, would, Brenda, you guys have a, um, a staff meeting room, or do you guys meet in here?
Uh, we usually.
You have a conference room back there somewhere?
No, just the council room that we use if we do a staff meeting.
So we would, we would, uh, find an appropriate place to set up where you're not gonna have conflict between the two things. Like, if you have a candidate like me whose voice carries, it might not be, make sense to have the interviews in the council chambers and then the roundtable in here. We probably wanna create a little more distance. Um, but yes, it would be rotating. So maybe one candidate's interviewing, one's in the roundtable, and the other two, or one is on a break.
Depends how much room you need, that voice carmen has an interview.
Yeah, we have a conference room that's tucked back there, the police department.
That could potentially work. Yeah, once we have a better idea of what it would look like and how many people, we would find the right appropriate space. Huh?
Kind of like carrying one's head.
Yes.
Yes.
This is a pretty robust process you guys are mapping out. You feeling good about it?
I am.
And then after the roundtables and interviews, then we decide when do we deliberate? And then that's when you bring back the feedback that you've collected from all these other pieces, and we go from there.
I'm going to, basically, when we map this out, we're gonna have, whatever it's your council meeting or a special meeting date, we're gonna have that as, okay, we're definitely gonna deliberate on this day. But the way we did the last, uh, search, we had, uh, we posted the meeting as interview of candidates and possible deliberation. Um, reason being, you might, you guys might know, you might, guys might get a rock star in here and he's, and everybody's like, holy crap, we want this person.
You might.
Six months and go, goes everywhere else.
Right. Um, you might also be, at the end of that day, I am exhausted, I don't wanna have this discussion right now, I wanna sleep on it. And that's when we have it ready for whatever that next meeting is. I wouldn't go longer than a week, though. I would try, like, let's say we did a Thursday, Friday, or Friday, Saturday. I'd be trying to do that following Tuesday, would be the ideal. Um, so let me map this out a little bit more. Let me give it some structure, let me get it back to you all, and we'll get some feedback. Sound good? All right, let's wrap up. Oh, I guess we have.
Could I throw one thing out yet?
I suppose, Tom.
No.
Okay.
Is, is, and I'm concerned about, about the businesses in general. You know, our Tifa district is very small. It's clothing stores, Zarek Center, margin, basically. Um, if I was a business owner from here down for the next mile and a half to the freeway, I would feel, and I've heard this, those people down there get everything, we don't get anything. And so I think their opinion, um, would be important, but that's what I'm afraid is, would get lost if we concentrated on, just on these businesses.
All you're doing is stretching my ability to be creative. I mean, the immediate thought that came to my mind is, I'd never been in one, um, and I'm not gonna call it a bar crawl, but I'm thinking of a strolling dinner, right? So as we're doing our orientation, maybe we say, at this point in time, we're gonna be at this business for half hour, forty-five minutes. Feel free to join us. At this point in time, we're gonna be at this point, feel free to join us. At this point in time, we're gonna be over here, at this point in time, we're gonna be over here. Have, instead of having one centralized time and place, it's spread out into micro engagements, if you will. Um, that might be a way to address some of that.
I'm just throwing that out, cause, you know, they all say, well, we're paying the same amount of taxes, but we don't get anything back from it. These people over here get all the development money, they get all the, you know, all the action is down there and, and we're not getting anything.
Maybe one of the stops is, uh, a little ten by ten pop-up in the, uh, industrial park. You know, industrial leaders, what have you, come on over here. Um, what would that be? That'd be east, um, I, I would have probably Tori help me, uh, marking, working with your staff or your assessor that you work with, getting an address list, there's ways, I mean, again, some of this is how much you guys wanna spend on notifications and all that. But we could say, um, maybe the chamber can help communicate some of this stuff too, but, you know, east end businesses from roughly this to here, everybody's welcome, but you businesses from here to here, we are specifically gonna be set up in this location for you at this time, something like that.
Or if they at least get a good notice, I mean, I think we tend to ignore them.
It's not, I've heard that's kind of sentiment in mall. It's not, I've heard that's kind of sentiment in multiple communities. Usually downtowns get all the love, especially when you have those huge districts that stretch for miles, and all the money and investment goes into the downtown, that's when you really start to tick people off. Um, I like that concept, I like the ability to be a little creative there.
The district that, from Shore to Shore, or something like that?
Marshall, Marshall Reed, yeah.
Marshall Reed, yeah.
No, it didn't happen. It was brought up, but I don't-
Yeah, we both did, so, yeah.
You did?
That was a little bit different, though, because you're not capturing TIPA, that's more of a parcel-by-parcel.
But we were paying attention to them, and we said, if you, you know, you'll have a tax incentive if you improve your property.
Yep.
So I think, I think we gave them some-
Yeah, 'cause it was a very short duration, because it's dying on the vine, because of the legislation.
But at least we, at least we tried.
I thought they extended that one, though.
They might, that'd be great. We were hoping.
Yeah, yeah.
I know they were looking at it.
It wasn't worth it for them.
Go ahead, Debbie.
I would be okay with one spot, just from a ease of moving, or, I mean, it's more complicated to move everybody all over the place, as long as, to your point, um, there's very robust notification.
I mean, we could split it up and have, say, two or three council persons at this place, and another two or three meets up with the group at this place, and that way we don't have, like, a quorum at any one of these places.
Yeah, we could definitely talk more about when and where it would be appropriate, or you would want to participate, 'cause, again, there's, part of the reason why we provide these multiple opportunities is to, I don't know if you guys ever noticed this, when you're on council, or even as a staff, sometimes we say things, we'll say things in one group, but we won't say them in another. I had employees that would never say something to me personally, but, you know, I walk out of the building, and these three employees are chattering over here, saying all kinds of things, that I would've actually kinda liked that constructive feedback, right? So that's why we, we wanna, um, make sure some of this stuff is sacred, but there are ways to mix that stuff, too. So for example, um, and then I am gonna try to move us towards conclusion, so you guys can have a little break before your meeting. Uh, for Dundee, uh, at lunchtime, and they were also a small organization, they had fifteen, sixteen employees, eighteen maybe, um, at lunch, uh, we invited all the staff, we just had pizza, nothing fancy, uh, and I think the, I think the president and a couple of other council members were able to make it and stop it. Uh, and we had lunch and just had a conversation as a group, a-again, all the candidates were there, um, some participated more with others, some asked questions of staff more than others. Again, lots of diversity in how we can do this. Um, you've given me a lot of good feedback, you're telling me we want a robust process, you're telling me that we wanna hear different voices, that we want it to be structured, we want it to be, uh, constructive, right? And I, I do wanna hit on a couple of those points before we wrap up here. So on interview day, what do you need to expect? Expect a full day. Now, with us breaking this up over two days, it shouldn't be terrible, but expect a roughly eight AM start and a four or five PM finish, depending on the number of candidates, and depending on how long we structure interviews and all that stuff. Usually I start around seventy-five minutes, depending on how many candidates we have. I like longer interviews, I don't like short forty-five minute interviews, unless you know you're doing a round two. A round two is really only necessary if you have two knockout candidates, or you know from the beginning. I think with all the pieces that you have, I don't think you wanna plan for a round two, unless we really get to the end, and there's a robust split, like, we all like these two, we just don't know which one we like better at this point, we wanna have these two folks come back. I will start the day with a brief orientation, uh, so let's say we start at eight fifteen, I'm gonna spend fifteen minutes with you, going through last-minute, uh, logistics, any questions about interview process, uh, and what have you, and then we'll kick off right at eight-thirty, that's how the last couple have been. If you guys are early risers, we might even be able to start earlier if you want. Uh, breaks, you'll get breaks, we don't go back-to-back, we make sure you can get up, grab a snack, go to the bathroom, whatever. We'll keep you fed, we'll keep you hydrated, uh, if you have a favorite, you know, I only drink Diet Coke, you know, just coordinate. Brenda and I, especially as we get closer, we're gonna be like buddies, we're gonna be talking to each other every day.
You asked all the questions, is that correct? Is it a set that-
Depends. Hold that thought.
Okay.
Hold that thought. Okay, do's and don'ts. It comes down, it's pretty simple, don't discriminate. I'm gonna give you this sheet, it'll be part of the, um, packet that you get in the, um, it'll be in a closed session packet, but also it's gonna be in, I will prepare a separate packet, so you have a cheat sheet in front of you, so you have, if you need to reference Joe's, you know, resume, or Jill's resume, while you're in the middle of interviews, you will have that next to you. These are basically all of the, the various, um, protected classes that you cannot ask about, even in a roundabout way. For example, um, uh, somebody's age, right? You can't discriminate basically somebody's age. Will might be able to knock this job out of the park, he just looks a little older than me, but he's probably only, what, thirty-four, thirty-five?
Greater.
Um, but, we can't say, so Will, when did you graduate high school? I hear you graduated from here, or what have you. You can't do that to try to get at somebody's whatever. Now, Will happens to offer it up, that's a different story, but don't fall down that rabbit hole, because even if Will starts that conversation, you continue it, you could still find yourself in trouble, if a decision comes down to perception. I have not been in that situation yet, where it's, it's gone too far, uh, or something has come up. I think only one of my folks have had somebody ask something they shouldn't have, and we're there on interview day, uh, no, Debbie, you can't ask that, candidate, please, we're gonna move on, or whatever. I don't know if Will's gonna be there on interview day.
Yeah, we can talk about that, yes or no?
Yeah.
Either way, whatever we want.
Um, don't forget, this is not your average interview, we already talked about how important this role is to the community. Um, I'm going to equip you, us, this process with strong questions. I'm not, there might be a couple easy-ish ones, but it's not gonna be super simple stuff, we want robust. This is the big one, I will stress again, when we start off the day on interview day, remember, these folks are professionals, and words stick. What do I mean by that? I can't tell you how many times where I've seen a colleague of mine get interviewed, and when it comes to deliberations, councils, elected bodies are trash-talking these people. And these people are people, they're human beings, they're gonna be applying for another job, and a paper happens to pick it up, and now that quote, that this person is a whatever, sticks to them for the rest of their lives. So when we get into deliberations, I'm gonna be encouraging you to focus on constructive, constructively vetting these individuals. It's not to say you can't talk about weaknesses, but there's right and wrong ways to talk about, this person just did not really come out as being a really strong, uh, written communicator, whatever, but, oh my gosh, put him in front of a group of people, or her in front of a group of people, and they're gonna knock people's socks off. There's ways to have the conversation without, um, dehumanizing somebody, that's an extreme word, but I've seen some councils get pretty close to that. We're gonna coach you as best we can to help you through that conversation. Do, be consistent. Whether you wanna decide today or not, if you want to ask, in most cases, my clients ask the questions. I'm there to help you through it if you need it, or if you wanted me to, like in DeWitt Township, that second day, interviews where we were doing all the, um, uh, scenario questions, it was me and Zach were doing all the questions. Council really just wanted to focus in and watch the candidates work through it. Usually, the way an interview works, because remember, these folks are interviewing you guys as well. We'll have the list of questions, the simplest way to do is rotate it, usually it starts with the mayor with a welcome, and I can't remember exactly, I think I could actually place you guys in your seats, if I think about it hard enough. But you're, we're gonna start with the mayor, and then we're gonna work clockwise, and we're just gonna go in order, right? That's the simplest way to do that, that also gives you an opportunity to be engaged in the process, um, but when you do that, if you do that, it's gonna be really important to stick to the script, because you need to treat all these candidates roughly in the same way. You can ask follow-ups, but the follow-ups need to be on topic, right? You can't only ask this person, I don't know if it's technically illegal, but I wouldn't do it, I would not just ask Tom about, uh, who his favorite baseball team is, but that doesn't come up with anybody else, 'cause I don't know, Tom might be a huge Tigers fan, and that's gonna be his deciding factor. Now, if you're gonna ask all of them that, fine, but again, it needs to be consistent. So, um, uh, let's say we're talking about downtown, and a candidate did not go into enough depth. Jeff might say, hey, you know, that, that you mentioned this tool, um, can you tell us a little bit more about how you apply this for this success? Like, you could do things like that, but again, we have to be cognizant of the timeframe, because it can be really easy for a person asking a question, and the person answering it, to get into a dialogue, and it doesn't act. Again, that's part of my role as a facilitator, to try to keep you guys on that, uh, that And, most importantly, be ready for the questions that you get asked. All candidates are gonna know they're gonna have the opportunity. Quite honestly, when a candidate doesn't ask a question I ask, I have new questions. But don't be surprised if they ask an uncomfortable question. I'll tell you a story, a really brief one. Again, most recent client. The week before interviews, I believe it was the week before, they had a very contentious board meeting, like, one of the worst they've had in a long time, so much to the point where the interim city manager had to speak up in the meeting. The candidate who they ultimately chose asked them specifically about that particular meeting. They worked through it pretty good, but you know what? That was one of the deciding reasons that council selected that candidate, because that candidate had the guts to ask the uncomfortable question in the meeting. Don't be surprised if something like that, that you're not expecting, comes up, just like these candidates shouldn't be surprised if a question that they weren't expecting comes up. Make sense? Okay. All right, deliberations, uh, and the selection process, again, we've already touched on this, I'm not gonna go too much into it, this is gonna set the tone of the entire relationship, right? It's like your first date. Your interview, the deliberation process, before you decide you're gonna go steady, or whatever they call it these days, um, that first impression, that first date, whatever, is gonna set the tone for the entire relationship. But then, there are other things after that that continue that tone, and my stuff didn't work right. Negotiations are gonna be the other area that's really going to impact the relationship and the tone of. Now, every community's different, the way we've been handling it is, we're gonna help support your negotiations. If you say, Nate, thanks, we like all the work you're doing, we really want Will to handle negotiations, we'd like you to, to stand down, or what have you, I will still be there as a resource to the candidate, but as far as you guys are concerned, I won't get involved on, on your side of things. The reason I like to be involved is because I know what you guys need, I know what the candidate's looking for, it's worked pretty well so far, being in the middle, right? And working very closely with the, um, uh, city attorney, and whoever else you decide, if any, uh, that you wanna have involved in negotiations. In DeWitt Township, they said, Nate, you handle it. And then we'll review it, they had a personnel committee, the personnel committee reviewed it, then it went to council. Um, in Dundee, it was Nate, get it to the finish line, uh, I think they had their mayor pro temp, and one other council member do a, a quick review after the, uh, attorney and, uh, the interim manager felt good about it. So you can do this in different ways. I've negotiated for myself, I've negotiated for others, I'm sure Will has done the same, um, that's gonna probably be the smoothest way to do it. Whether you want to have a secondary look before it comes to council, whether it's a, a subcommittee or whatever, we can decide that later. But I think with where we're at, given what we've talked about so far, my recommendation would be, you guys have kinda given me the, the ground rules already, you've set the scale, we know where the current benefit package is for employees, let us start it, we'll get it and keep it within where we think you all will be comfortable, and then we can kinda work through it. If there's any sticking points where, that we think might be coming, we will raise that to you, and then we will figure out how to address it. Uh, so, when we get in negotiations, I'll just jump in, there's, you could bucket them into two separate buckets, roughly. You're gonna have your compensation and benefits, salary, ben, uh, benefits, paid time off, retirement, uh, allowances, things like that, that's one area that we're gonna be negotiating on, these are the, the bullets that are typically where the focus is, a lot of the other languages kinda generic, kinda standard, uh, although written a little differently, and then you have non-compensation. So this'll be things like initial term, I'm probably gonna defer to Will, I don't like initial terms, because they're at Will anyway. I like evergreens, you guys might say, you know what, Will, we're only doing a three-year to start, or a one year, or whatever. I can tell you, a one year is gonna be a really hard sell with a candidate. Because you guys did the Strong Start search, we're gonna put a little bit of language in there to make sure those candidates follow through that, that stuff. You guys don't wanna pay for something and then have the candidate totally blow it off. Uh, and we don't want that either, because that's part of, that's tied to the guarantee we've given you, so we wanna make sure that stuff's in there. Performance evaluations, I know that's come up, that's always in, um, the agreement, how what much it's spelled out varies in each community. Uh, in this case, again, with the Strong Start, we're doing a six-month check-in, we're doing a twelve-month facilitated evaluation, that'll be built right into, um, uh, the agreement. I would never put expectations or goals in the contract, but you usually have some language that ties back to mutually agreed, uh, priorities or goals, or something along those lines. We'll talk about that more in a minute, holy crap. Uh, sorry, it's almost time, I better speed it up.
Yes.
You guys need your break.
We need to.
Uh, and professional development, what have you, yes, onboarding, done, I'll fill you in, I'll send these slides, I'm done.
Thank you. So we need to allow time for a public comment here, so if there's any one in the public that would like to make a comment over anything we've discussed. Hearing none, let's adjourn, so we have some time, or adjourn, thank you.
And next time, you can just say, Nate, it's time to stop talking.